All right, everyone. This June 18th, 2020 Electronic Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. I will take a roll call. Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Frisch?
I'm here. Sorry about that.
No worries. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Omesh?
Here.
Ms. McCarty-Ski?
Here.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan? Ms. Tolan? All right. Ms. Bautang?
Here.
Ms. Bautang, thank you. And Ms. Corbett-Sanders, I see you're getting settled here.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. Yes, just there you go. You got the camera. All right. We are ready to rise now as our student representative Kimberly Bautang leads us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Thank you now, and I will turn it back over to Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
I call on Ms. McCarty-Ski for a recognition of the School Board Character Award recipient. Thank you. Sorry about that. Very excited to be able to offer this recognition today. The School Board Character Award was initiated by former student representative to the school board, Chris Gioverelli, and established by the Student Advisory Council in 2001. The Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation has generously funded the $500 award since 2007. The award is given to a junior or senior who demonstrates a continuous record of high morals, strong integrity, and good character, and who is recognized as a role model for students in Fairfax County Public Schools in day-to-day behavior. It is my honor to announce that the recipient of the 2020 School Board Character Award is Daniela Pereira Flores, a senior at Centerville High School. Daniela is a tremendous source of hope and inspiration for the Centerville High School community. Daniela immigrated to the United States and initially struggled to adapt. She did not speak any English and left behind her friends, her family, and community. Daniela worked hard and became stronger, more independent, ambitious, and persistent through her immigrant experience. She learned to appreciate the things she has in life and to work hard to reach her goals. Daniela's dedication and persistence enabled her progress from taking ESOL classes in middle school to earning As in honors and AP English classes in high school. Daniela's success is due to her grit and perseverance through challenges. Her experience in AP English Language is indicative of her approach to all of her classes. She embraces rigor, works incredibly hard to gain new skills, and is tireless in her pursuit of knowledge and academic success. Daniela is committed to helping those around her and devoting her time, energy, and considerable intellect to bettering her community. She is a regular volunteer at a variety of programs and events that hold a special place in her heart, such as the Latina Cy Girls Program, the Hispanic College Institute, and the Word of Life International Church. She has donated her time and skills to support the Centerville Immigration Center and the Consulate of Guatemala. She is also completing an internship at the Immigrants First PLLC in Manassas, Virginia. As a natural leader, Daniela has been selected to participate in the Jennifer Wexton High School Leadership Program and the Hispanic College Institute Leadership Program at Virginia Tech University. Daniela is a value-driven student with sterling integrity. She values making a difference in the lives of others and dedicates her time to helping others in the school. Daniela has taken on an assistant role in the ESOL department, where she works with students individually and in groups to help them access their education and resources. Daniela helped create this role, seeing the need in her school and volunteering to take on the work that went with it. Daniela truly believes in improving the local community and the world she lives in and happily devotes her time to creating a positive difference. Please join me in congratulating Daniela Pereira Flores on this great achievement. And I know we have Daniela and her family with us virtually. We are also proud of you. Congratulations. Cannot wait to see what you do in the future.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. An internship.
Thank you.
Daniela, we are so proud of you. And when we are able to be back together in person, perhaps we can get a picture with the board, but it's unfortunate that we can't do that today.
I know, yes, but definitely I will be there. And once again, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it, and it means a lot to me.
Thank you, Daniela.
You make us proud, Daniela.
Will do.
And now I am very pleased to call on Mrs. Keys-Gamara for a recognition of Juneteenth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the month of June is a time that many in our nation recognize Juneteenth as the holiday that celebrates Emancipation Day, the day in history when the last state ratified the Emancipation Proclamation, and whereas this date marks the time period where African-Americans of Texas received notice from President Lincoln that slavery had been abolished, a declaration that was codified in the 13th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, and whereas June 19th also marks the day that African-Americans in the southern states exercised independence from those who benefited from their labors in the founding of this nation, and whereas the journey of African-Americans represents both great achievements and great hardships, and whereas our nation is currently witnessing the injustices of the African-American journey that have existed for far too long, this June 19th celebration weighs heavily on our hearts and our minds in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd and others who have not been treated equally under the law, and whereas the pain and anguish displayed on our national stage developed from generations of systemic racism that impacts our students, families, staff, and communities, whereas the educational institution of this nation, including FCPS, has a particular responsibility to recognize the painful realities of our history and make sure that our curriculum reflects these realities, and whereas working with the community as one Fairfax, this board is committed to identifying actionable items to improve policies and procedures to give greater access to opportunities to ensure that students, families, and staff do not experience inequities in Fairfax County Public Schools. And whereas we value diversity and are united in our opposition to racism and hate, we stand in solidarity with our African-American students, educators, staff, and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County Public Schools hereby officially commemorates Juneteenth as a day to celebrate and emphasize a collective call to action against injustice of any kind.
I so move.
I so move.
Is there a second to this? Dr. Anderson, second. Ms. Keys-Gamara, would you like to speak to your recognition?
I do, and I will ask for your patience ahead of time. I get so passionate about these issues. Indeed, today we do recognize the significance of the date marked Juneteenth for African-Americans and for all Americans. And with that, I am going to share a personal story that ties in not only the significance of this announcement back in Texas, which coincidentally came more than two years after the actual signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. It was a delay symbolic of what we are experiencing in this nation. So yesterday, my personal story is this. I got a call from my son, who just recently graduated from college, and he had witnessed a domestic violence incident. He didn't quite know what to do, but he was very aware of the things going on in our nation. So he took cover, called the police, made sure the young lady got help, and they asked him to stay there and wait for the police. And his statement is truly a statement on where we are in this nation, because as he talked to the police and gave a description of himself, he had to say, "I'm a black man. Please don't shoot me." I want you to let that sink in. My son's response to this interaction is the result of our failure as a nation to truly deal with the inequities in our nation and our unwillingness to really accept what happened as we accepted slaves 400 years ago. African-Americans came from nations, from a continent of cultures and families and kings and queens. They were humanity. But all of that was ignored in the slave trade. And we didn't, we never really stopped to say that it was wrong. Yes, we had opportunities. We had the Dred Scott case that went to the United States Supreme Court. And that was when the United States... Sorry?
Go ahead and just, Keys-Gamara.
Okay. We had an opportunity to turn away from those things, and we have so, an opportunity so many times before, whether it was that case, or lynchings, or the KKK, or a number of other opportunities. But in looking at what has happened to George Floyd, we now know that our shortcomings are far too great. So we must recognize the unacceptable numbers of such things as the unacceptable numbers of people who have been African-Americans that have been accepted to TJ. We have to recognize that that is a manifestation of problems within our system, that we have to have greater access and opportunity to advanced academics, to affordable housing, to economic opportunity. And so we have to clean our own house. Yes, we have to get rid of Confederate names and a number of other things. And so I simply want to say, we have begun to tear down these things. We have begun to address the problems. But celebrating this day will mean nothing if we don't do anything. And so I challenge all of us, and I know that my board members will stand with us, as we remove the barriers that have created these inequities and impact our students unjustly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Dr. Anderson?
I'm just so very glad to second this resolution. And a lot of the things that I've written in my comments have been stated by Ms. Keys-Gamara, even though we did not work on this together at all. So I'm just gonna go ahead and jump in. Juneteenth is a holiday that was put forward to commemorate the emancipation of enslaved people in the U.S. Emancipation, the fact or process of being set free from legal, social, or political restriction. Liberation. I highlight this definition because since the first Juneteenth celebration in 1865, legal, social, and political restrictions on African-Americans remain a fixture in all of our institutions. Today, I join the voices to focus this year's recognition of Juneteenth not only as celebratory, but as a call to action. I seek for us as a school board and school division to reflect on what it means to liberate our students of color and staff from legal, social, and political restrictions in our schools, restrictions that impede, limit, or restrict educational opportunities. I strongly urge the FCPS community to commit to the work of moving the needle on the issues presented to our students and families. The symbolic observation of Juneteenth does little for students and families who are consistently on the receiving end of systemic inequities, such as, but certainly not limited to, access to rigorous academic instruction, including, but not limited to, TJ admissions, special education over representation, disciplinary disproportionality, schools named in honor of those who sought to oppress or those who sympathize their causes, and mascot names that are derogatory in nature to various groups, dearly lapped of accountability to behaviors and actions that support a culture of low expectations for some of our students or disregard for basic humanity. These are a few of the immediate issues that we can address in honor of Juneteenth that I will be holding myself accountable to. And I urge our colleagues to join me in this call to action. As we shared previously in the forum, rhetoric without action might as well not take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do any of my other colleagues want to speak to this? So, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Keys-Gamara, I am so pleased that you all brought this resolution forward. It is something that I feel very passionately about, and it actually builds on the letter that this board sent to the community just a couple of weeks ago. And it is a call to action. And so I very much appreciate what you've brought here. I believe that we need to include Juneteenth in all future recognitions going forward on the school board meeting closest to the 19th of June. I also think it will be a wonderful period of time every year that we do self-reflection to say, what have we done to honor what we are signing on to today? What, how are we making systemic changes to positively impact our Black students, families, and staff? And so thank you so much for what you've done here. It is greatly appreciated. I now see that Ms. McLaughlin would like to say something. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just want to quickly say that not only do I appreciate the eloquent words of both of my colleagues who brought forward this resolution on recognizing Juneteenth, but I also want to express my appreciation to Dr. Braybrand and our county executive, Brian Hill, who works collaboratively to ensure that now county and school employees will have this as a formal holiday to also honor the day and have an opportunity for reflection. And as Dr. Anderson and both Ms. Keys-Gamara said, actions without words do not bring us to the change that we want to see in our communities. And so I am so thrilled that you've both identified where we need much change and growth in opportunities for all students in Fairfax County and really appreciate the way that you've captured it here today on what is truly a historic and long-overdue recognition of a solemn day in our nation's history, but one that brings a lot of hope.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darnack-Cofax?
Yes, and I too, I want to share, I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. And Ms. Keys-Gamara, I know you brought this up last year, and I understand your passion as Dr. Anderson. And I've heard from many people just today about because we are recognizing this in Fairfax as tomorrow, as a holiday, and as a day of reflection. And you have a pledge from me as a fellow board member that this will be something that we will work on together. These will not just be words without action. And as we move forward, we move forward on this road, we will work together to make sure the inequities that you're speaking of and that we see, that we've seen, will not continue and will be addressed. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Darnack-Cofax. Ms. Omesh?
Thank you, and thank you, Karen and Ricky Ricardi for reading the recognition with the encouragement of Kimberly and to give voice to Kimberly Nathan and all the students in our schools who now have the opportunity to reflect on this, to celebrate this, and the emancipation of many people, and to think that this is a start to teaching our history, that this is why narratives are so important, and this is why when we live in a county this diverse, it is critical for us to reflect on the histories of all kinds of people, in particular those who, when our nation was, had declared its independence in '76 and had yet to find that for all people, and for African-Americans in particular, in 1865. And it took that long for our country to decide that something like slavery was unjust and that, you know, for, whether it was African-Americans or even Native Americans who were enslaved and the combinations in between, that the struggle for emancipation was something real in this country. I want us to just reflect on that, that it was actually acceptable once upon a time and that leaders across this country propagated something like that. So now in celebration of the opposite, to think about liberty and freedom being something that is not just physical, now that we've moved past that, right? It's social, it's emotional, but it's mental. And having to carry the burdens of discrimination or things like that certainly speak to the need to continue pushing forth freedom. And I don't want to kind of water down, you know, the holiday that this is. So in being positive about that and looking forward to further achievements, I'm happy to celebrate this. I'm happy to see now that it is going to be a holiday across the board for all of us and hope that we can be proactive to beat the state next time to doing this and certainly connect, having known that a third of the slaves that came here shared my faith. And there's so much intersectionality with that. So in any case, happy Juneteenth to all those, which is tomorrow, June 19th. And here's to many more celebrations of freedom in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Omesh. I will say that this was put on the calendar a couple of weeks ago. So I think technically we did beat the state, but we're glad to join the state in this celebration. Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
Great, thank you very much. And I also want to echo a great appreciation and thanks to my colleagues, Ms. Keys-Gamara and Dr. Anderson for bringing forth this recognition and for the very heartfelt and wise and much-needed words of... And so I don't want to sort of center my own words too much in this. I wanted to speak up to say that when I participated in The Swearing In back in December, the book I carried with me was A People's History of the United States. And it was my copy that I got in college. And it's because this mission of centering voices that haven't been heard and making sure that our history reflects all of the people and all of our rich histories is so important to me that that's what I, the message I wanted to swear myself in on. So I'm just here to say that I'm pledging to also not have words without actions and to be an ally moving forward to make sure that everybody in our schools is, are equally respected, included, valued, and everybody's histories and cultures are studied and understood and valued from varied perspectives and from a lens of the deep and rich history of which we all have. So thank you, and I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to standing alongside you all as we move this work forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer. Ms. Cohen?
I really appreciate my colleagues bringing up this resolution as well. And I, in the spirit of making sure that these are not words, that they're actions, I really challenge all of us to look at what are the systemic issues in FCPS that leave many of our Black African-American students to feel othered, to feel like they are not supported, and sometimes that they're actively in a system that feels like it's working against them. So as Ms. Keys-Gamara said, in the forum topic today regarding the name change for Mosby Woods, we have low-hanging fruit, but we also have work that needs to happen systemically. We need to work on our hiring practices. We need to work on our professional development. We need to work on our SRNR. We need to work on AAP and TJ. We need school-specific interventions around anti-racism. We need anti-racist curriculum. We need to have conversations about the roles of SORs in our schools. And we need to tackle truancy and make sure that we are not inadvertently participating in the school-to-prison pipeline. Those are just the very beginning of conversations that we need to have as a board and as a community. And I hope that if there's any good to come from all of the bad that we have seen and all that has been exposed in the last few weeks, I hope it will be real action more than just a resolution of a recognition of an incredibly important day. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Marin?
I'm very pleased to support this resolution and pleased that the superintendent has granted as a day of observance for our staff. Ms. Cohen outlined the task before us, and I'd like to challenge our board here to see if we can save time before the end of the meeting at 5:30 to go back and hear the forum topic that she presented to address that very list of things that she put forth. I would, you know, if it's at 5:30, if we can reserve some time, we can set forth the work for staff to start doing this. So I will certainly aspire to keep any other comments short and reserve time. I'm happy to make a motion to that effect, but that's what is most...
So, Ms. Marin, this is, I appreciate your advocacy. This is not, there's not a motion for that. We're going to talk about this motion first, and then we can continue on, okay? I appreciate it. We'll try to keep this tight. Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, hi. Thank you very much for bringing this resolution forward. I thank my colleagues for that. Some of my earliest memories in life are volunteering at the St. Boniface Parish in Milwaukee and peacefully marching with Father James Grobey to promote civil rights for African-Americans. My mother was a quiet activist, and in her strong, persistent way, instilled in me the knowledge that all people are created equal, no matter race, religious affiliation, county, country of origin, sexual orientation, profession, disability, et cetera. No person's abilities are to be underestimated, and equitable treatment of all individuals is unquestionable. And all people need to be treated with compassion and respect. I wanted to mention, I was fortunate to be on the phone earlier today with one of our administrators, and I want to commend them for moving some of this work forward already by moving forward with discussions with our parent communities, our student communities, and our staff. And as this administrator eloquently put it earlier today, there is no period at the end of this sentence. We have lots of work ahead of us, and it's something that needs to continue as we move forward for years and years. And I look forward to working with my colleagues and our administrators and staff across FCPS to continue this work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. Yeah, very quickly, I appreciate the comments of Karen Keys-Gamara and Ricardi Anderson in their eloquent discussion of Juneteenth. And I would underscore Melanie's call that we keep ourselves as quick and brief as possible today. And it would be fantastic if we could return to the forum topic that was next on our agenda, which would move the school division forward on a number of these issues formally, so that staff can get to work. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms.? Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. Just briefly, I also want to thank Ms. Keys-Gamaro and Dr. Anderson, who so eloquently talked about this topic. And I too just want to say, I am ready for action and I'm ready to do the hard work. And I think we as a board are there and I think the community is ready to have these difficult discussions. I see them happening in my schools. And the only way to really move us forward is to have the hard conversations and do the real work where it matters. So I am also committed to this and I thank you both for bringing this to us today.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Boating, did you want to speak to this?
Well, not quite right now. I think I'll speak more to it during, like more to everything during Student Matters, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the recognition put forth by Ms. Keys-Gamaro and seconded by Dr. Anderson, please show your hands and I will call you out. Ms. Marin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, Ms. Omesh, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Frisch and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That motion is unanimous. It does carry. Now we will go on to the portion of our agenda, citizen participation. And before I go to that, I do want to call people's attention that our traditional procedures for board meetings are that we have our forum before the board meeting so that it can be recorded out to the whole public during the board meeting. So if I can continue through this meeting, what I would like to offer, because I understand the sense of urgency, is that we have two separate board meetings next week and I'm going to suggest that we add a forum topic prior to the vote next Tuesday night on changing the name of Lee High School. So we could go ahead and do that and have staff have the guidance that is much needed in this area. So I'm going to now call for the vote on the recognition. All those in favor, please put your hands up. Oh, I already did that. I apologize. So now we go to citizen participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, 14 citizens have signed up to address the board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation and thanks to those who have come to speak to us today. Our first speaker is Jennifer Hernandez, followed by Susan Danowitz. Ms. Hernandez?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm here today because, hi, I'm here today because I'm demanding that the school board take concrete steps to address the lack of representation at TJ, especially in regards to Black, Indigenous, Latinx and low-income students. I don't mean continuing the status quo by only focusing on STEM outreach programs, which are unnecessary but alone have not solved the problem. I also don't mean just promising to address systemic racism in elementary and middle school because these important actions should be happening regardless of the TJ statistics. I am specifically advocating for a fundamental change in the admissions process to become race and class conscious. As a school that is meant to cater to future leaders in the STEM field, why are we continuing to exclude the voices of underrepresented groups? How is it possible that students can graduate from the best public high school in the United States without ever sitting in a classroom with a Black high school student or a low-income student? Why does FCPS continue to pretend that students are not being excluded from this institution under race and class blind admissions when that is not the reality at all? The current admissions process perpetuates systemic racism. It is the fact that the FCPS system does not offer equal opportunities for all students. White and Asian-American students have a significantly higher chance of having access to STEM extracurriculars, test prep and high-level STEM instruction before they even take the TJ test. By using an admissions system that chooses to focus on those factors without recognition of how unequally those resources are distributed across FCPS and other participating counties, FCPS is ignoring the systemic struggles these communities face. I went through the admissions processes as an eighth grader and have spoken to students whose families have used all of the available resources to get them into the school. For many, it is pay-to-play. Families pay for expensive test prep, they move to expensive areas to attend feeder middle schools, their parents pay for STEM extracurriculars and tutoring. The admissions process is simply not fair. If the school board is willing to commit to make TJ a more racially and socioeconomically inclusive school, it also needs to put support programs in place so that these students don't feel as alone as I and many other underrepresented students felt. There were several moments I wanted to drop out because of the lack of support TJ gives to underrepresented students. Think about that for a bit. I was willing to give up this opportunity because of how I was treated and the fact that no one ever reached out to address these issues. Until FCPS actively works to implement a more welcoming culture, underrepresented students will continue to feel this way. Many alumni are ashamed of what this school has become. TJ needs to change and the change needs to be fundamental and different. We can no longer accept the status quo. All right, I'm done. Thank you so much for listening to I Had to Say and thank you so much for your important work.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Danowitz?
Hello. In 2004, I first spoke to the FCPS school board. Admissions to Jefferson were under review and my Black and Latinx alumni friends encouraged me, class of '92 and resident, to advocate for policies to decrease the effect of test prep and increase diversity. It is 16 years later and the same problems that plagued Jefferson have persisted and accelerated. I am here before you again in front of an inspirational new school board, begging for real, permanent course correction for my dearly beloved high school. When the news was out that TJ's class of 2024 again was accepting less than 10 Black students, the increased consciousness of this moment caused an outpouring of concern and outrage. A TJ Alumni Action Group for Diversity exploded, adding 600 new members in just two weeks. Hundreds of alumni sprang into action, gathering signatures, writing letters and articles, analyzing numbers, researching the history of TJ admissions with regards to STEM underrepresented groups, Blacks, Latinx, women, underprivileged students and students with disabilities, and also researching the broader landscape of inequity in magnet schools throughout the U.S. We have realized that enough is enough. The inequities suffered by Black students in Fairfax County need to be faced head-on. Black opportunity matters. These past two weeks, Black alumni have revealed story after story of racist moments during their life leading up to and attending Jefferson, being told by teachers and administrators that they weren't ready for AAP or Algebra or Jefferson or Yale, told by students they were only there due to their race, that they only got into their top 10 university because of their race. My Black alumni friends report that they are burnt out by this problem at TJ. They've been fighting it their whole adult life. One told me, "I'm just exhausted. I've seen zero improvement in the 20 years since it first came into my focus." The school board and FCPS administration must solve this. There is no space for half-measures and poking at the margins anymore, no more ridiculous hope that small changes will suffice. FCPS must fix admissions to Jefferson. We must revisit all the prerequisites, the bias to process, and we must revisit how Fairfax County serves our county, our community, through our crown jewel STEM magnet school. Second, the board has a critical opportunity this week. Halt the calling of waitlist students immediately and use this strategic moment to increase diversity at Jefferson. Finally, FCPS must immediately implement a strong anti-racism curriculum at Jefferson to be in place this fall. Ignorance may be the reason, but it cannot be an excuse any longer for a brilliant child to be undermined when they are accepted to MIT or Harvard. The history of the curriculum needs to be taught. Ten have been in FCPS curriculum already. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Danowitz. Ruth Metzl, followed by Kelly Villa Guzman.
To echo Jennifer and Susan, we TJ alumni are outraged by how underrepresented Black, Latinx and free and reduced lunch students are in TJ's class of 2024 and in past classes. Many people have said to me throughout the years that TJ is just a part of a larger systemic issue, that in order to fix TJ, we have to fix the entire legacy of systemic inequities in Fairfax County public schools. As a 2006 alum, I feel that too often that argument has been an excuse when in fact it is the inverse. We need to change TJ now in order to change the systemic inequities in our larger school system. In 1960, when Black students sat down at a Woolworth's lunch counter in North Carolina, many people could have said to them, "Why? Why here? Why should you care about sitting at one lunch counter or going to one science and tech high school?" And this is just one symptom of a larger systemic issue. Go fix that larger issue and then of course you will be allowed to sit at Woolworth's. Go fix the larger advanced placement issue and then more underrepresented groups will get into TJ. But it is precisely the targeted, specific efforts at one Woolworth's, at one prestigious high school that are how we create that larger systemic change. They are not just the aftereffect. From the families I met in my Spanish immersion elementary school in Arlington, to the amazing parents and students from underrepresented groups around Fairfax, I know that Nova is home to incredibly driven, educated, proactive families not represented at TJ. There's no excuse for TJ's abysmal numbers that do not reflect this talent in its straw district. Never before these weeks have I heard so many fellow TJ alumni from underrepresented groups come forward with traumatic experiences of their time there. The school culture must change alongside the admissions culture. The TJ Alumni Action Group has emphasized this in multiple letters demanding change that we'll send to you after this meeting. Over 300 alumni have signed on in less than a week. We demand immediate action. Two, one, add anti-racism to TJ's curriculum. Two, hold students and staff accountable for racist words and deeds. Three, critically examine TJ's lack of diversity and exclusion of Black, Latinx and low-income students and make a plan to fix it. Four, pause acceptance to the 2024 TJ waitlist and sophomore year intake to consider immediate action. And five, change the school mascot. A colonial decision isn't acceptable. In the context of the current national moment, this school board faces a choice. Choose anti-racism and transform America's number one high school into an environment that excels at STEM through empowering all demographics in its straw districts or remain tone-deaf to the national conversation that will inevitably ripple through the entire education sector. We alumni here is a resource for you, but we state in no uncertain terms that this is the year that swift, aggressive action must be taken to address all dimensions of this complex and so far intractable issue. It includes examining discrimination in the TJ admissions and AAP admissions processes and many other things. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bonia Guzman?
First and foremost, I want to express my gratitude for giving me the opportunity to address you all. However, I'm still willing, I will not be holding back for the remainder of my time. My name is Kelly Bonia Guzman and I'm a rising senior at Hayfield Secondary School. Before I transferred, I attended Thomas A. Edison High School as a freshman and I grew up and went to school with the majority of the current students there. Due to COVID-19, Edison seniors are given the opportunity to participate in a virtual graduation in which they are allowed to submit both a photo and a quote. In light of the current events, multiple students decided to honor Black lives through this. For instance, a current senior quoted, "This graduation is dedicated to my friends, family and the Black lives that were lost before they were able to graduate." Nonetheless, Edison's administration silenced these students, stating that the decision was above them as it didn't reach the sidelines set by the FCPS school board due to its political mess. If any of you believe that statement was even remotely political, I beg you to please reevaluate yourself in your mind slot. For centuries, the Black community has been oppressed in what was the one and the school system is just one place where that pressure has occurred. In no way is honoring the Black lives that were lost political and I am ashamed to be a part of a county that does not allow students to not only freely express themselves, but to at least recognize the wrongs that have been committed against Black people. Not only am I disappointed, but I'm honestly not even surprised. Despite FCPS consisting of an overwhelming amount of minority students, time and time again, this county fails to represent us accurately. My peers and I have been subjects to racism, discrimination and more, all at the hands of this county. Mind you, I'm Latina, so there is no way I can even begin to fathom what Black people go through. But I want you to imagine what my Black friends and peers are forced to experience on a day-to-day basis. Even though the superintendent publicly tweeted out a video telling us that you all will no longer be silent and you all will no longer ask us to be silent, I've seen no change. It makes absolutely no sense that a county that prides itself on cultural inclusivity and diversity would prevent its students from speaking out against such a significant injustice. And in theory, it's me, because I just sat here listening to y'all recognize the issue for what it is and you all clearly know how to solve these issues or at least know the direction we need to head towards. Yet again, I've seen no change. To the superintendent, I ask you to do better. To the rest of the board members, I ask you all to do better. If you all do not take action and continue to silence us, you all are complicit and the systemic racism does burn in this nation for too long. Before I wrap up, I want you all to know that it's not the last time you all hear from me as I refuse to sit silent until I see change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Ms. Quintana? Isabel Quintana, followed by Anant Das.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. My name is Isabel Quintana and I'm a rising senior at Thomas A. Edison High School. The reason I chose to speak today is to address the injustices in place and the school board's part in them. FCPS says that they are against racism as well as stand against hate, but in the moments where they are put to action, they fail. I've seen this firsthand. At an invitational track meet, sorry, I was called a racial slur and told that I needed to run for my green card. I reported it, but the boy who said it faced no consequences. I am president of the Latinx Student Union and I hear the things that my peers, both Hispanic and Afro-Latinos, things have to go through. And they all go unpunished and it's heartbreaking. I was disappointed then and I'm disappointed now. I'm not surprised when I heard that the seniors at my school were told that they could not dedicate their accomplishments to Black lives. They were told that it was a political issue and therefore could not be publicized. Since when have the lives of our peers and the lives of our community been political? FCPS said that they were taking a stand against racism and that they would not silence us anymore. Yet now, in a time of the greatest achievements for most, they are silent. Many are choosing to take down their videos and their quotes instead of changing it because they will not take away their support for Black lives. This is supposed to be something that the community could see to celebrate these students for their hard work. This board has taken the opportunity away from these students. This is their stand against racism, something that your board has preached not only today but in the past. The making of Juneteenth recognized as a holiday is a start, but it is not enough. I urge the board to speak up for the lives of all its constituents, including the children of color, including the Black children, who feel that they are not supported or hurt. We should try to make this county more accepting for their majority of minority students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guzman. Ms. Quintana? Isabel Quintana, followed by Anant Das?
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I believe that was Ms. Quintana.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. Anant Das, followed by Mr. Franklin Siegel.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anant Das and I'm a proud Virginia resident, having been in FCPS schools from K through 12, attending university and state and graduating from Thomas Jefferson High School in 2015, where I served as a school-wide student government president. There was a time at TJ where we were dealing with the largest student hardships due to our renovation, dealing with new school judicial guidelines and many other challenges. But I have fond memories of working with the school board on a variety of issues while as a high school student. And I'm excited to be here today speaking in front of you all as a recent college graduate and a TJ alum. When news broke out that once again that TJ's incoming class accepted less than 10 Black students, I spent a lot of time listening, listening to Black and Latinx alumni and alumni from the other underrepresented populations at TJ, as well as current students about their experiences. I worked all through high school and student government trying to help students love their experience of the school as much as I did. I know no high school experience can be perfect. Mine certainly wasn't. But a student population that does not reflect the county's population, that is not indicative and representative and including the groups currently underrepresented, hurts every student's experience with the school, especially those in underrepresented groups. I remember in high school trying to work to find solutions to this problem. I was told as a student that there was nothing I could really do, but now I realize I was wrong. It's why I'm here in front of you all today. I plead that you all, the school board, and FCPS I plead that you all, the school board, and FCPS administration work immediately to resolve this issue. There's no more time to test the waters, no more time to have words without action. The time for effective change is now. Firstly, changes have to come in the admissions process. We have to examine the process and realize it's not equitably serving all students in our county. And we have to address the inequities that go further in the younger grades from access to math and other learning opportunities that some students who apply to TJ get, while others do not, simply seen from the middle schools that feed into TJ. TJ is a school for everyone. Yes, many of us are interested in science and math, but that opportunity to attend a school should not be restricted to those who happen to live in certain parts of the county. We need to make sure the opportunity is equitable to all students all over the county, and we must get working immediately to ensure the process is reworked in time for the next cycle of admissions. Barriers in the admissions process must be removed. On top of this, we must work to promote an attitude in all middle schools that students interested in STEM can and should consider TJ, regardless of where they live or what school they attend. Moreover, I believe there must be an emphasis in the curriculum at TJ, starting this fall, to focus on racial inequities and anti-racism. Students need to understand that they can contribute to an inclusive environment for all students, including those currently underrepresented. From my time at TJ in 2011 to 2015, I did not receive any curriculum designed specifically to learn about racism beyond the brief lessons in U.S. history and occasionally English. I should not have gone four years out of high school named after Thomas Jefferson and not learned anything about him and his past with racism until I ended up going to the university he founded. Lastly, an immediate action that can be taken is to halt the calling of waitlist students to fill in any available spots in TJ's incoming class, and rather use this strategic time to increase diversity at TJ. I appreciate your work, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Das. Ms. Franklin Siegel, followed by Katia Ismael.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Corbin Sanders and members of the board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Gila Franklin Siegel, and I'm the Associate Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Washington, representing over 100 local synagogues and other institutions. Over the last year, the JCRC has worked closely with Dr. Braybrand and his team to address increasing school-based antisemitism and other issues impacting Jewish Fairfax County Public School students. We appreciate FCPS leaders' substantive good faith partnership. We're honored to represent the Jewish community on FCPS's Religious Observances Task Force. Today, the JCRC was pleased to submit to the board, along with our Muslim, Hindu, and Sikh task force partners, a joint letter supporting FCPS closure on a limited number of days coinciding with key religious festivals in our respective faiths. The JCRC strongly believes that implementing these changes will remedy academic and logistical challenges experienced on those days. Jewish FCPS families are perennially frustrated by inconsistently followed guidelines for accommodating observance of the Jewish High Holidays each fall. Students routinely report feeling penalized and othered for their Jewish observance. Review days, classroom tests, or COGAD assessments scheduled on Yom Kippur, assignments due on or the day after Yom Kippur, teachers and other staff forced to take personal days to observe, or worse yet, feeling forced to not take those days at all. These types of conflicts arise each year. The pressure to progrow these sacred Jewish observances is intense. It falls upon school administrators to ensure that individual teachers across the 10th largest school system nationwide follow the suggested guidelines, resulting in considerable logistical, academic, and emotional strain on students, families, and educators alike. The long simmering frustrations of Jewish FCPS stakeholders were evident in the JCRC town halls with Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Duran last fall, as those of you who joined us for those events witnessed firsthand. A 2017 demographic study confirmed that the Jewish population in our region is the third largest in the nation, and that within our region, Northern Virginia has overtaken suburban Maryland as having the greatest number of Jews. More Jewish children than ever attend FCPS, and more Jews are employed by the district, and that number will assuredly continue to grow. We're gratified that both draft calendars submitted for your consideration include the closures we believe are warranted and necessary. The closures will eliminate scheduling conflicts regarding instructional review and testing, meaningfully reduce faculty-student tensions regarding accommodations, and relieve growing pressure to secure substitutes and otherwise manage staff coverage. The entire system will benefit as we advance our collective goal to nurture schools where all students feel that they are valued and treated with equity and respect. We therefore ask that the Board of Education institute school closures for students and staff on days coinciding with the first day of Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid Al Fikir, and Diwali. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franklin Siegel. Katia Ismael.
Hello all, and thank you so much to the students who had the opportunity to speak before me and for the county to allow me this platform. I would like to speak on the inaction of the school board and our county superintendent on the affairs and the necessities pertaining to our county's minority student population. The coronavirus has brought upon us some unfortunate times, but it also allows for time to reflect upon such inactions and put forth change in our county for these students. It is unfortunate to hear about the murders and the lynchings of Black people and minorities around the country. It is also unfortunate that many of us are privileged enough to reside in such an opportunistic county and allow our privilege to get the best of us. Inaction is allowance, and our silence is lethal. Even from the words of our superintendent, saying nothing about these issues like racism only makes matters worse. We will not be silent anymore, and we will not ask you to be silent anymore. So if this is true, why is it that the voices of students at Edison are being silenced? When did advocating for the lives of Black people, the lives of minorities in this country become politicized? When did human rights become a topic of controversy? A topic where many of us who have been made to be seen as less than are able to be continually told such by a group who haunt our culture to our insufficiency and systematismically that we are nothing? And to allow it to continue to happen as a country is one thing under a current administration, but as a school system that is meant to educate our youth, perpetuating the cycle of inaction is simply unacceptable. It has taken our county school board three years to even begin the process of renaming Robert Uli High School, and even then, it took my writing a petition and our esteemed student representative to get things going. This should not be the case. As a student in this county, as a student representative of the MSAOC, and most importantly, as a minority in this country, I ask that our elected officials please take my words into consideration in pushing more proactive in combating active racism at institutions in our county that allow for the perpetuation of the achievement gap and discomfort of underrepresented students in our school system. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ismael. Jorge Torrico, followed by Asra Nomani.
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much for the time and opportunity to be able to address the school board. I come to you as a resident of North Virginia of 13 years, a resident of the Northern Virginia area of 31 years. I come to you also as a high school graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology and a UVA graduate in 2004. I myself am a representative of a cadre of students that has been lessening in number over the, throughout the time at TJ, with less than 2% of low-income, free, or reduced lunch students. I was one of those. There are also, this particular admission cycle, less than six or less African-American students, and that is what we're calling for, to action here. It cannot be accepted any longer. There are systemic issues in our county, in our nation, that have to be addressed and that the movement that has been swollen up during, with the tragedy of George Floyd's death, that we must take action. And my testimony this time, I would present a personal perspective of what is going on in this area. You know, the advanced academic program is the bedrock of the pyramid that feeds into TJ. And one thing that it demonstrates is that there is, with added resources, with added knowledge, there's a disadvantage that those populations are experiencing in not being even get placed into advanced academic placement. And that is through the appeals process, through the fact that you can have private retesting, you can have, you can pay $600 an hour to have a psychologist test you privately, and in there, there's the economic motivation to make sure that those test results are more beneficial. Then after you pass that, you're placed into the AAP program, then you have the opportunity to, with added resources, added money, pay for added school activities, after-school activities, such as, for example, drama plays where you have to pay $500 just to participate, apart from the fact that you might be paying for school, after-school childcare, which in and of itself is $1,600 and cannot be offset if you're participating in other activities. So then you're building a padded resume that makes you look better. You pay for private academies and private sessions that ultimately prepare you in a better position to take the TJ examination. That illustrates, again, this funnel strategy by which wealth creates inequity, by which the disparities that were started through, you know, Jim Crow laws, obviously through slavery, and ultimately through redlining and the accumulation of wealth generationally is ever-present in our county and is then further propagating this situation. I call on the school board to be more proactive in having transparency in terms of the numbers and the data that is allowed to be presented. Sure, it can be anonymized to protect students' privacy, but there should be some way to know what percentage of kids are appealing, getting into AAP through the appeals process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Torrico. Ms., or Asra Nomani. Asra Nomani. Okay, we're gonna go to Joseph Dodson.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I want to start by saying that I am beyond proud of all the students who have spoken before me and that as a rising senior at TJ, I agree that change now more than ever is needed. Now, I want to address discrimination in FCPS. While the school board has committed to equality in writing, in practice, discrimination is still very much present. Some students use racial, homophobic, transphobic, and xenophobic slurs in school with no repercussions. FCPS must take a stronger position in rooting out all forms of hate in our county. To do so, our county's curriculum should emphasize the contributions of marginalized groups to America, starting at a young age. Sanitizing history for elementary schoolers doesn't protect them. Instead, it holds them back from a true understanding of what happened as America developed, impeding further progress. For example, the struggle for civil rights for Black Americans didn't start and stop with Martin Luther King Jr., and yet he comprised almost all of what we learn about. Massive resistance, which FCPS participated in, wasn't taught to me in 4th grade Virginia Studies, not in 7th grade American History, not in 8th grade Civics, and not even in 11th grade AP US History. I had to learn about it on my own. Instead of learning about the true history of America, we learned about the regions of Virginia, Pocahontas, and Swanton, both of which were whitewashed. The legacy of racism and racism itself still exists in America, rightfully leading to today's BLM protests. So it pained and disappointed me when a student at Edison was told that they could not dedicate their graduation to Black Lives. When did fighting for human rights become political? Dedicating their graduation to Black Lives is in no way comparable to including the expressly political language of MAGA or the widely recognized racist symbol that is the Confederate flag, which the ban on political speech was supposedly meant to prevent. In conclusion, I urge this board to stand up for our county's minority students and include the real history of America in our curriculum, starting with Virginia Studies in elementary school. The best way to fight discrimination is to show the contributions and struggles of marginalized groups in America. And finally, this board should support its minority students in their current struggle for equitable treatment in America and allow them to say Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Asra Nomani. Asra Nomani, I see your speaker, your hand up and your speaker, your microphone open. Can you hear us? I will come back to you, Mr. or Mrs. Nomani. Rahel Seliman.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, good evening, I mean. My name is Rahel, and I'm a rising junior at TJ. And in light of current events around the world and our community that have affected me personally, I'd like to share my experiences and perspectives as a member of the TJ community. As you already know, it has come to the attention of the people in this community that there were few to no Black students accepted into the class of 2024. And in all truth, I am not very surprised. I mean, how can I be when I can count the number of Black students in my TJ class out of 450? Regardless of how embarrassing this may be, these proportions will no longer be ignored or accepted. Change must happen. Like all students, I applied to TJ to find a school tailored to my high standards and academics, and I can now say that I definitely got exactly what I came for. The rigor, the high expectations, and the focus on STEM is clearly something unmatched by any high school in this county, to say the least. It would be foolish to assume that I'm one of few URM students who seeks higher education, but the reason there are so few of us regardless stems from other factors. In many ways, I too am privileged and lucky. Though I did not properly participate in prep classes for the TJ entrance exam, these classes have an impact on the admission of students. Though it's not a guarantee to admission, it serves value. My family did not have to worry, luckily, about finances and would not hesitate to provide the money required to boost my confidence, but the same cannot be said for all of the bright and willing students who have an interest in pursuing TJ. Of course, this comes the other resources and materials that aid in preparation for these exams, obviously leaving low-income students at a disadvantage. Another way in which I was lucky was my mental preparation, being a URM in an environment where I was and would be largely surrounded by people who didn't look like me. Though it may not seem important, this confidence is key and something that my father instilled in me from a young age, reminding me that I shouldn't feel out of place. Thanks to the support at home, I was rarely discouraged and basically unfazed, but I can't again say the same thing for other students. For this reason, TJ is and will be missing out on bright young minds that may not feel comfortable going to a school where they have almost no representation. And can you blame them? I ask FCPS to take part at a time when systemic reform begins to occur throughout the nation and even the world. I do not put the blame on the current administration or policies, but I do believe that FCPS can do more to help. I personally believe that targeting URM students who are already passionate and excited about learning will be an effective way to see their numbers rise over the coming years. Hopefully, this will also encourage those who don't already feel welcome at TJ. I also asked FCPS to provide finances and extensive resources to close the gap between opportunities for low-income students and others. These should not be the reasons why intelligent, motivated students miss amazing opportunities to further themselves and get an education from one of the best schools in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Seliman. Diane Cooper Gould, followed by Hura Nasa Fariad.
Hi, I'm Diane Cooper Gould. Most of you know me as a disability advocate, and I am also a 1992 graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Over the past decade, I have been active in the TJ alumni community, and I have also felt proud of my alma mater until recently. Since its inception 35 years ago, TJ has had a shameful problem with equity of access. The Black, Latinx, disability, and economically disadvantaged communities know this. Students and faculty of TJ know this, as do FCPS and the county. The Commonwealth of Virginia is aware, and now in the midst of a global, in the midst of global Black Lives Matters demonstrations, the shameful news has broken that the number of Black students admitted for the 2021 school year is, quote, "too small to publicly report." This admissions data is an embarrassment, and it has shined a spotlight on TJ. The entire country and world are now reading these articles about the racist number-one high school in America. TJ-HSSNT is a perfect example of systemic racism in action. As it stands, it is a blight on Fairfax County Public Schools. Unrepresented ethnic and racial group alumni report the racial trauma they have experienced while attending TJ. And I'm sure if you discuss the matter with the MSAOC, they might be willing to tell you about why many of the Black and Latinx community members look at TJ as being actively harmful for their children, to the point that many of these parents discourage their children from applying. Thirty-five years, and the problem is only getting worse. I am ashamed, and you should be too. The truth is, FCPS has not made a real effort to increase accessibility to all county residents. It does not really want to change, because if it did, it would, and it has not. Fairfax does not want to mess with the formula and risk losing bragging rights, despite with this, who this inaction may hurt or what racist systems and mindsets it perpetuates. But if the U.S. News and World Reports changed its judging criteria to heavily weigh racial diversity and equitable access, I bet we'd find a way to make TJ more inclusive posthaste. The illusion of being the best and bragging rights are more important to FCPS than TJ actually being the best, because TJ is not the best. It is systemically racist, and based on the discussions lying in various alumni groups, of which I am a member, it is perpetuating racism in many of its students, views that they take into this community at large. For years, this board has For years, this board has been championing "one Fairfax", but in light of the latest admission data, perhaps the TJ tagline should be "none Fairfax." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diane and Ms. Cooper Gould. Huranessa Farriad.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Huranessa Farriad. I head the Outreach and Interfaith Department at the All Dulles Area Muslim Society. I'm also on the Fairfax County Public Schools Religious Observers Task Force. I've been working with them for almost two years now. First, I want to apologize if you hear any outside noise. I had to step away from a meeting, and this was the only place for me to get onto this call without having to listen to other people. But one thing we, as a group, would want the board to approve is the 2122 school calendar year, which includes the religious holidays on the calendar when it comes for the Muslim, Jewish, and Hindu holidays for that year and beyond. We know that Fairfax County is quite diverse, and it represents many people from many different backgrounds and faith traditions, but yet it has not been inclusive in terms of allowing kids to be off from school on their religious holidays, especially when we have so many of our students in Fairfax County who are of these different faith groups. Not only that, we can see how much of an impact it has when kids miss school, when they're home during the holidays. I know myself as a Muslim, when my kids are home, they have to figure out how to make up the work, how to make up the tests, and how to actually get in touch with their teachers. And even on top of that, if there were some leniency or some formula for the staff and the teachers to make sure that the children are not being marked, not just being not marked absent, that's a different story. I know that they have an excuse absence, but at the same time, missing work and then how to make up that work and who's actually going to enforce it, making sure that the teachers are going to be fair. And then with the Muslim calendar year, it follows the lunar calendar year, which is about 10 to 11 days shorter than the Gregorian calendar, and every year it moves. So right now, Eidul Fitr is, was in the end of May. Eidul Adha comes at the end of July, but every year that, those holidays will move back 10 years, 10 days. So within the next five years, both Eidul Fitr and Eidul Adha will be in the school year calendar. And so that's something to be mindful of in terms of how we're going to work around that and incorporating that into the calendar as well. But in all, it has to be something that we have to be looking into because it will alleviate the amount of work that's going to be required by the school itself, the teachers and the students, in making up those days and making up SOL testings and making up any work that they have not been able to do because they decided to stay home on their religious holiday and not come to school. But if we look at New York City, which has actually incorporated religious holidays into their school calendar year, it has actually been easier on the students, the families, and the staff in making sure that the work is not something that they're going to have to make up later on and that everybody's on the same page when they're coming back to school after these holidays. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to try one more time for Ms. Nomani, Asra Nomani. Okay, I don't have Ms. Nomani here, so I'm going to proceed with Student Representative Matters, Ms. Boating.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me all right?
We can hear you, Ms. Boating.
Perfect. So it's been a minute since I've been able to address the public, so I just want to say I missed you guys. I'm off camera right now because I'm actually still recovering from my wisdom teeth surgery not too long ago. But I'm good enough to speak, so I think that's good because I actually do have quite a bit to say. And while I do want to be mindful of our time, I'm just going to go ahead and preface and say I don't have intentions to shorten it because I often feel that voices like mine don't take precedence. Like, of course, I'm not just like me and just like me personally, but voices of my demographic of like people like me often don't get the platform. So I'm just here to take up a little space, if you will, and I hope y'all can accept me for that. To begin, I want to thank everyone who spoke today, especially the students. Since the beginning of my term, I've always pushed for having students come out and speak. And more than ever, it's really important, and I really want to thank everyone for having. I know it's hard to speak, even for me. It gets hard to talk in front of people, so it takes courage. So I want to commend everyone who did come out and have the chance to speak. And, well, minority students, specifically now Black students, I just want to put out there that personally, and I hope for all of us, we love you. I can speak from many experiences. It is definitely hard coming up in a system that was not made for us to succeed. And the past few weeks have been hard. They've been painful, they've been distressing. But in my honest opinion, I feel as if this past weeks have been very necessary. Normally, I don't really like bring in like personal stories and personal like experiences, but as a person, I fear every day that my brother and my dad will go out someday and not return home. I fear every day that one day, for whatever reason, I'll disappear and nobody will look for me because thousands of Black girls go missing every day and nobody cares to look for them. It's painful that I've had to spend most of my life thinking to myself, should I make myself sound more white so that people accept me? Should I tone down my blackness? Should I stop using certain slang words? Maybe I shouldn't wear my Afro so big, all of that? And it's ridiculous. It's been ridiculous for the longest time, and that's part of the reason I'm not sure if I've said it often. I am a big, like, I don't, I don't like professionalism because I feel as if it's rooted in, dare I say, elitism, and it's been rooted in the fact that if you sound a certain way, you won't be accepted in a certain workplace. And I want to remind everybody, racism, Black death, lynching, and discrimination as a whole did not end with Martin Luther King Jr. People just stopped paying attention. And I urge us not to just change names. I'd like to commend the whole board for doing the work that like is important to change names and to push for, because like, like many of the school members said earlier today, names matter, symbols matter. But I also, I will also be speaking along with many of my classmates at my high school's public hearing on Monday, but I also want us to take, urge everyone to continue to take initiative and take a really deep look into our history course. I shouldn't have had to learn as an elementary school kid, as a fourth, like a 4th grader, that slavery just was, that all these things just happened because that's just how it was. That shouldn't have happened. I only really got the opportunity to take a deeper dive into atrocities of slavery and the Confederacy and what slaves and Black people really went through. And I didn't get a chance to take, understand it and take a look into it until this past year. I'm 17, and I didn't learn really what happened until this year, and that is unacceptable. And that is part of the reason why people think the way they do about a history. History needs to be taught as it happened, not as how we thought it happened or how we would like to think it happened. As it happened, we owe it to the people who have spent years suffering, to the people who still continue to suffer. So to all the students, especially the Edison kids, I hear y'all and I stand with y'all. Human rights is not a political issue. It's not politics to ask to be respected and more simply, to not be killed. It's not politics. And I used to be, like, I'm gonna be so honest. I used to be a little scared to kind of like talk about certain controversial topics, this, that, and the third. But it's important, I was given this platform, and it's important that I speak about certain things that sometimes don't get the opportunity to get spoken from, from a student perspective. I've had issues in the past with administration that caused me to literally want to move a school. I ended up moving schools. And I don't talk about that often because I feel as if it's too personal, but it's real-life situations like this that not just, that many students in our county go through. But to wrap up, I'm only here for now less than two weeks. I think this is either my last time or my second-to-last time. Ms. Corbett Sanders, is it my last time or my second-to-last time?
It's your second-to-last time. Actually, it's your third-to-last time because we have our meeting on Tuesday, where we will be voting on the change of name for Lee High School. And then we have our meeting next Thursday, where we will be recognizing and celebrating the excellent work you have been doing.
Okay, so it's my third-to-last time. But regardless, I'm more than excited to hand this position over to Nathan. He's going to be phenomenal. I look forward to every, like, great thing he's going to do. And I'm sure, I'm not sure, sometimes people forget I'm not graduating. I'm still going to be here. I'm still going to be, you know, shaking some tables. That being said, I'm going to be brutally honest here. We have a lot of work to do as a county. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, a lot of work. I'm happy with this board's passion to move things forward, and I really hope that we don't lose this fire and energy for staunch bureaucracy and systems. I've been quite long-winded, but as always, I want to make sure that I talk and say for all of us to take care of ourselves. It's really tough. I'm, I'm gonna be honest. I've been, I've had struggles like coping and compartmentalizing. Everything that's been going on is difficult. I guess it's kind of like, I can say like, as a Black and female, it's been difficult and very painful. But I also know that I am allowed to have sparks of like joy. Like, I paint, I write a little bit just to make sure that I'm in the right headspace, and I encourage everyone else to find stuff to help them cope. And also, there's still a pandemic happening. So I, I know, I'm saying this to literally everybody. Don't listen to conspiracy theories. Don't think that everything's opening up because it's safe. Listen to the health officials. People are still dying, so mask up and be safe. And very importantly, continue to fight the system and bring changes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boating. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01. Approve the request to submit the nomination for the Virginia School Board Association 2020. The Health and Medical Sciences Program is recommended for submission to the VSBA for the Workforce Readiness Award. The program is being recognized for the work with the Claude Moore Foundation in advancing the Health and Medical Sciences Program with workforce development. Additionally, the work of the school board has resulted in more work-based learning opportunities for students and flexibility in teacher licensure to expand dual enrollment opportunities for students. 6.02. Approve the appointment of Lee Burden, Helen Nixon, and Marty Smith to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Item 6.03. Approve the appointment of Michael Burke to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2020. Item 6.04. Adopt the policies on the No Change Memo as detailed in the agenda, in the Agenda Item. Item 6.05. Confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1, 2020 and ending May 31, 2020. Item 6.06. Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the Agenda Item. Is there any objection to approving the Consent Agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the Consent Agenda is approved. Seven, New Business. Following our New Business Agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01. Appoint individuals to serve for a one-year term ending June 30, 2021 on the Adult and Community Education, Advanced Academic Programs, Career and Technical Education, Human Resources, Minority Student Achievement Oversight, School Health, and Students with Disability Advisory Committees, as listed in the Agenda Item. Item 7.02. Adopt the 2021-2022 Standard School Year Calendar. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brabran, I apologize. Ms. Maron has a question about the New Business. Ms. Maron.
Yes, thank you, excuse me, Dr. Brabran. I had planned to bring forth the motion about changing Columbus Day to New Business People's Day, and we had discussed that it would be under New Business. So is that to be listed here?
Ms. Maron, what you suggested was an amendment to our calendar, and so that would be put forth as a motion by you at the next meeting, and then we would adopt it. It is, it is on, it is linked to something that is connected to the Agenda Item for New Business.
Okay, I thought I heard from the clerk that it would be listed under New Business at the time, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, ma'am, that would be.
You heard from the clerk that it was going to be discussed next time.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Maron. I'm really glad you asked for that clarification, and we'll make sure that your amendment is put forward. Dr. Brabran, if I could call on you for Superintendent Matters.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Thank you all. I have two things, and then I know we have a public hearing, so I'll try to keep my remarks brief. I do want you to know that I shared with our staff earlier today that I had previously shared thoughts and feelings about racism and hate in our country and my commitment to eradicating them from Fairfax County public schools. I know you've heard from a lot of speakers today and, of course, in emails and interactions over the last several weeks. I've talked about, and we've talked about, expressing solidarity with our Black and African-American student staff and our community and speaking up and taking a stand. And I was pleased today to share with our staff, just as you all were passing a resolution to acknowledge the historical significance and importance of Juneteenth, that as a step on our journey to create a more inclusive and compassionate environment, that I am announcing that FCPS, Friday, June 19, which is tomorrow, is an official holiday for FCPS employees in recognition of Juneteenth. As many of you referenced earlier, I did this in collaboration with the county executive, Brian Hill, and the county is also extending that to their employees. And of course, as you all know, the governor earlier this week made Juneteenth a state holiday and made that a declaration for state employees. I encourage all of our staff and our community to use tomorrow as a time for reflection and learning. And I know together we can work and will work to break the chain of systemic racism in our community. I also wanted you to know that that work is going on, not just at the system level, but at the school level. Earlier today, the principal at Fairfax High School, utilizing the power of our regulations, has announced a mascot change. She has shared that while Fairfax High School, for a long time, had a mascot that was called Johnny Reb, and while the mascot was changed in the 80s by a principal, by Principal Harry Holsinger in 1985, the word Rebels remained. And so earlier today, she shared that moving forward, Fairfax High School will no longer use the Rebel language. Fairfax High School will no longer be the Rebel pride. It will be known as the Fairfax Lions. Ms. Leonard has been working very closely with our FCPS leadership and with the City of Fairfax School Board that has ownership, of course, of the facility around the coming school year, working to remove the Rebel name. And we've already worked, of course, to purchase new uniforms without that team name of Rebels. And we will continue to be looking at all of our capital improvements with the City of Fairfax around that. And she has shared that she believes our entire community can move forward and feel whole, valued, appreciated, and affirmed as Fairfax High School rises together as the Fairfax Lions. So I'm very proud of our principals. I'm proud of our staff. And finally, I would just say I'm also very proud of all of the work that the board is doing and the community is doing around feedback for return to school. I had a town hall earlier this week for parents, one last week for staff. Our task force met today, and we are looking forward to bringing you our plans next week as we move forward for return to school. So thank you very much, and I will talk to you all again very soon.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Brabran. Before I go to committee reports, I'm gonna take a one, less than one minute um break for the whole board. If just one minute, I need to clarify something. So please give me the patience of one minute. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for um humoring me. Uh, two things. Ms. Nomani, I apologize, but we tried to get you um earlier. Okay, she's Ms. Nomani. Um, our section for citizen participation has, uh, was completed. And so I apologize that you were not able to speak this evening, but if I could ask you to please sign up for Tuesday night, we will make sure that you have that opportunity, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nomani. I now have a hand up by Ms. Cohen. Uh, Ms. Cohen.
Hi, yes, uh, Madam Chair. I uh, I know this is an unusual request, but um, I am hopeful I would like to request that the board add a forum session to next Tuesday prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting. I recognize we ran out of time today for our forum topic, uh, but I've submitted a forum topic that is designed to um take a look at the racism and bias in our Fairfax County Public School System and has defined timelines with immediate um short-term and long-term goals for how we work actively to eradicate racism in our system.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I know that that is a time-sensitive forum topic. Do I have a second for your uh motion? That second is by Ms. Maron. Um, Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to that and then we can take a vote?
Uh, certainly. I, I really appreciate the opportunity. I know that this is a bit out of our normal practice. Uh, I just, I feel very strongly, as I mentioned during the comments, on our Juneteenth recognition that we have a lot of areas that need to be addressed uh in F C P S. And one of the issues, I believe, is that we have done some piecemeal work, and I, I have no doubt that some of it has been good, but I don't see an avenue for us to be able to pull everything into one place and really recognize um in very specific actionable ways what steps we can take to be true anti-racist in this system. So I'm hopeful in introducing the forum topic. I'm hopeful that my colleagues will support some very specific actions that we can be taking um as a, as a group to make some real change.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen. And I think moving it to Tuesday does give us the opportunity to have the, the deep discussion amongst board members, which is so important. And so, uh, Ms. Maron, do you have more to add? Because all we're doing is voting to have Tuesday.
Yeah, not for lack of interest, but lack of time, I'm happy to go forward with the vote.
Great. Thank you so much. So all those who can support adding to our agenda and introducing a robust discussion around Ms. Cohen's forum topic for Tuesday prior to our work session, please show of hands. So I have Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Maron, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, Ms. Darinak Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omage, Ms. Pikarsky and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Uh, that motion carries, it's unanimous. We will be having that discussion on Tuesday. Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen, for making, for bringing that forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Next on our agenda is board committee reports, and I first call on Vice Chair Darinak Kofax for a readout from the forum discussion that we had earlier this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you said earlier this evening, a forum topic was brought to us by Mr. Frisch and Ms. Keys-Gamaro. The topic was to begin the renaming process for Mosby Woods Elementary School when the process concludes for Robert E. Lee High School. Um, that, there was robust discussion on that. The board commended their colleagues and unanimously supported this initiative. And um, just for the public, the process for renaming Lee High School will be, should be complete on July 23rd. So that's when this um could begin happening after that date. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. So I now call on Ms. Maron for the public engagement committee.
Yes, hi. The public engagement committee met this past Tuesday, and we report the forum topic again, which gets the work onto the school board's full agenda. Um, the first forum topic submitted by Rashid Muhizar was to ask that the board um review our advisory committee processes and how that work can be done more efficiently. Uh, actually, I believe it might have been submitted earlier this year, but this is updated to include, among other things, procedures for public comment during our meetings and also during public hearings. So just um to get that conversation started and outlining the things to be addressed. Um, I am also going to, excuse me, and then overall, the discussion went um on the lines of needing a more full board discussion about what we really intend to have for community engagement, what that means, what the vehicles or platforms that we use are, and how to be sure that our board um infrastructures and staffing and supports and technology can enable our, you know, we school board members to engage, you know, best with the public. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maron. Mr. Frisch for the governance committee.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Uh, we have had two governance committee meetings since our last regular school board meeting. In addition to reviewing a number of policies that required no changes or minimal changes, uh, and sending some of those to staff for additional input, uh, the full school board will soon consider governance committees substantial recommended changes to our abuse reporting policies to better protect students and more clearly articulate um uh the responsibilities of staff for abuse reporting. Also, uh, we are nearly finished with recommendations for significant revisions to our conflicts of interest policy, uh, which will um hold principals, department leadership, uh assistant superintendents and other members of the leadership team, as well as our superintendent to a higher standard of ethical conduct when it comes to outside work, gifts, uh financial matters and entanglements and other items. So we will be getting to that in our next board, in our next committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
Thank you. Uh, I will be bringing a report for the audit committee. Um, we, to give a follow-up on the uh special education review, uh, sorry, we uh, in order to identify the best qualified vendor to perform this important school board initiative, a comprehensive evaluation committee has been formed with key stakeholders and constituents, including parents and independent university professor as well as teachers. The review is planned to start in the fall and will be completed over the next two years with annual progress reporting to the school board. We also, at our June meeting, uh, the O A G also presented a detailed breakdown of the proposed fiscal year 2021 audit plan. The audit plan serves as a guide for the audits to be performed during that year and other tasks to be completed in order to promote the achievement of the division's strategic goals, especially in the area of resource stewardship. The O A G will present the fiscal year 2021 audit plan to the full school board on July 9th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keys-Gamaro. The next order of business on our agenda is typically board matters, but knowing that we have well over a hundred people waiting for a public hearing, I am going to dis- to dispense with the board matters this evening, and I apologize to my colleagues for having to do so, but we do have people waiting. And uh, this meeting is now adjourned, and we will begin the public hearing uh within a minute. Thank you.